I will call these selectmen's meetings to order. Please join us in this flag salute. A pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two, action on minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item number three, adjustments to the agenda.
Yeah, I have one. The abatement request that came in earlier for Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, map R 13 lot 5A. Do you have it from the assessing agent in front of you?
Where do you want it? Do you want to do that first under business items?
Uh.
Or right now?
If the board is willing, we could move it after 5.1 so we can take care of that business first.
Okay, we'll do that. Is that okay? Public comments. Please state your name and the town that you were from for the record if you would like to speak. Lois.
I think we're all wonderful. It's done. You don't have to do this. Just try.
That's good.
Thankfully, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none. Number five, business items. 5.1 swearing in of the new selectman and to elect a chair and vice chair of the board of selectmen for the new year. So Wendy.
Somebody come over there right here.
I want you right.
Forgot my bad leg, right?
Probably back.
I have no idea. Okay. I, Dana Dillingham.
Hi Dana Dillingham.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof, so help me God.
So long as I should continue a citizen thereof, so help me God.
I, Dana Dillingham.
I'm Dana Dillingham.
Do swear that I faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me as selectman slash assessor. Duties on me.
The duties. One more time.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As selectman and assessor. For the terms of three years.
For the terms of three years.
For the town of Oxford.
For the town of Oxford.
According to the Constitution, laws of the state.
According to the Constitution, laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Last one. Thank you, Wendy. Annually, we elect a new chair and a new vice chair.
I don't know. This is something what we want to do where Colby's not here. I don't mind putting it off if you think we should, but.
Can we wait until the next meeting? It's up to you, whatever you decide.
I'm going with waiting. Everybody else is going with waiting. I'd rather have everybody be here. Okay.
Done?
How you want to do it?
Yeah. All right, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
5.3, review of. Now we're going to do.
3.1.
3.1 right now. Abatement. Adam, can you explain it?
Sure. So this is the abatement for tax year 2022 for the Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, i.e. Walmart, for R 13 5A. And the assessing agent Donna Hayes has reviewed their abatement request and she is recommending to the board that it be denied.
May I motion again?
Second.
Again.
Discussions?
This happens almost every year, doesn't it?
Hence for long term.
Yes.
All those in favor of denying the abatement? Thank you. 5.2, review approve Oxford Plain Speedway mass gathering, 603 diesel truck event with attendees under 4,999. Three events July 15, 16 of 2023 and September 30th, 2023 and October 1st.
Second.
Discussion?
Is that three separate events or?
Yes.
Three separate days?
30th and, oh, three separate days. I'm sorry, four days.
Wow, okay, I'm sorry.
The September 30th and October 1st is two separate events?
Correct. They are all separate, yes. You got the one that's a two-dayer for July and then two separate days for September and October. Yep.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 5.3, review approve liquor license renewal application for Oxford Plain Speedway.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 5.4, K House discussion. Adam, can you go over this please?
Sure. So in short, recently I've been talking about some different repairs and different items regarding the K House. As you can see, there's some folks here from the Historical Society and supporters from that. One of the things that we had discussed in this process was the fact that if the Historical Society had ownership of the K House, they would be eligible for more grant opportunities than with the town owning the K House. So one of the things that I looked into from that conversation was the fact that, looked at all the back history, you have it in front of you with the deeds, how the K House was transferred to the town of Oxford and the covenants or conditions, if you will, within there. Specifically, when it was transferred to the town, it had to remain a museum for historical purposes. And if the town ever, if it was ever sold and not fulfilling that purpose, it would have to be, the proceeds would have to support a local nursing program or scholarship fund. So I consulted with the town attorney and reviewing everything. And the town attorney feels confident that, based on what he's read, that the K House could be transferred to the Oxford Historical Society as long as it continues to be used for the same purpose as a museum. And, but with the understanding that those covenants would still be in place, that if they would no longer able to maintain it and they were no longer able to keep it, that the proceeds from that sale would then be used for that same nursing program, you know, effect. So what I'm bringing to you folks here is before I go down the rabbit hole too much further, I wanted to see what the selectman's feeling or temperature was on this. If the board did in fact want to move forward with this, it is something that would need to be decided upon by the voters at the town, you know, town meeting level. I shared with the town attorney that I think that the next, the next time there's voting will be in November. So potentially, we could do a referendum ballot if that was something that the selectman wanted to do. The attorney felt that was an appropriate approach. So does the board have any thoughts on any of these things or? Or maybe even the K?
I guess I'd be interested to see what the Historical Society.
I'm actually going to let Elton Record Lifetime Trustee speak on behalf of the history of the K House.
Okay.
In reference to, because he was one of the original, um, uh, back in 1985. He's been around quite a while with his society.
Called a selectman.
Oh, you were a selectman. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They selected me.
Oh, that's right. He was appointed.
Then they kicked me out. Yeah, if, the way it was, like the insurance man said, it wasn't safe. Well, I've been there 38 years and hasn't changed from the time we took it over other than the porch. Everything else is still the same. There's three bedrooms up over the kitchen. The kitchen is, has, is a long span like this. And there's three bedrooms upstairs and the floor has always been a little springy. But I'm sure it's been that way for awful lot of years. I know 38 years it's been that way. And if we had it, which that's what Brenna Clifford wanted in the first place, is to give it to society. But at that time, it was just a few elderly people that didn't want to take on that responsibility. That's why it kind of worked through giving it to the town for the use of the society. In the meanwhile, we've put a lot of money in. We've, we've, I'm sorry to say, but the things that we've done, we didn't ask the town. Because every time we went to the town manager, the town had no money and we couldn't do anything because we didn't own the building. So we put in all the windows, the replacement windows and the, we've done a lot of other work there, small stuff. The roof over the addition there on the barn for a deal school. We had the floor taken out so it could give us some headroom. It was a chicken barn and the floor was like this high. So we had that all taken out so we could display the artifacts. So I think personally and the society thinks, if we're given the building, then it'll be up to us to take care of it. We can't, we, we won't lean on anyone else to, or depend on anyone else to take care of it. We'll take care of it through donations, grants, things as I talk. And it'll, the town get rid of it. I mean, they were, you won't have to even bother with it anymore.
Essentially, essentially, the only, the only ask ever of the town, that to my knowledge, has been a half, half the expense of a repair of a roof. We've always maintained all the expenses. Aside from what the agreement originally stated, a lot did not happen on either side. On the town's part and the society's part, back when the initial agreement was written, there was a tenant. So we were getting some income at that time. The money was supposed to go to the town. The town was supposed to pay all the expenses. Never happened. We've been, there was, I found in the minutes in 1987, there was a discussion with Charlie Borg about us just keeping the money and paying the bills and taking care of everything. So I think at that time in 1987, basically, the society members decided, because it was such a struggle to work with the town selectmen at that time, that they would just manage it. And so we have, um, four years, so.
And that was, the roof deal was another thing that, it was kind of a sore spot for me because we wanted some say whether, we wanted somebody local doing it. But it was up to the selectman and the town manager. And they hired that fly-by-night that he didn't seal well. The chimney's good. It ruined the old paper inside. The insurance man thinks the roof leaking. It isn't because it's been fixed, but that ruined some things. And when tried to find him, he's gone. He's out of state, just gone. So, um, the, the roof isn't leaking. The, like, insurance man thinks. We talked with Adam the other day about that. The things that I kind of wished I could have been through, gone through with them and things, but that didn't happen, so that's all right. But any questions that, you know, that want to ask me if I can answer?
Thank you. Board members.
I make a motion and we put it to the board. That's which is what we got to do, correct?
Yes, we do.
Good.
Do you have any discussion?
I would second that motion. The only question I have is, does the Historical Society want the building?
We do. We've been managing it. We.
It sounds like this should have been years ago.
We've been doing it.
Exactly.
Well, I, I support having it go to the referendum ballot vote in November. That's what I think we'll do. And there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? So in November, we will have a, it will be a referendum ballot vote where all of the voters will vote at the polls to.
Thank you.
The attorney will draft up the, the language for.
So there was a discussion that town manager and I had about the use of the meeting house. Right now, that also is town-owned property. And our thought is, because essentially, right now, the town has closed us down. So we can, we only operate from April to October. We get our donations by visitors, people that come to see our society, people that come to look at town records, all of that. So as of right now, we're out of business essentially. So in conversation with Adam, there was a discussion, the meeting house is not being used. Is there the ability for the society to set up temporary housing where we would essentially have like a historical library, where we would bring some of our things, materials, that visitors could come, research their families, do those things, which is essentially what we have now. We just wouldn't have the ability to have tours at the K House. But it, but essentially, I think with that, we would still be able to bring in some donations throughout the year.
I would support that. I think that that is a good use of that building. The only thing is, you might have to look at having a portable toilet put there. Because if you're going to have people come in, so you might want to think about that. And there used to be a portable toilet there years ago when we had town meetings there anyway, so.
Would the, would the town have any objection to putting one there for us, for that temporary use? I mean, it's just another added expense that, you know, if we're going to essentially work on money and donations and things to fix up the K House and, and, and work towards that as well as, you know, it, it just, would the town consider helping us in that respect? I, I don't.
How long you, how long you, how many months you talking?
April to Oct-, well, now we're June. So, so at the latest, it would be November because it would be too, essentially too cold after November. We would not have our, we wouldn't necessarily have our meetings there.
How much a month? What is it?
Like $600 maybe.
July, August, September and October. You're looking at four months.
So even if you got one of those handicap ones, it's like, what, they're like a buck fifty a month or something? So I mean.
So can we actually go into the K House and remove things?
Yeah, I think if we want to, yeah, we can orchestrate that so you guys can go and grab what you need and, yeah.
It's actually in the leaving room anyways. We don't go into the house pod anyway, so.
And we don't go in the barn really. So I mean, any concerns? Again, we, we feel strongly that had we had an opportunity to do the walkthrough with the insurance guy, that the things that he pointed out could have been very well explained. Because what he was essentially looking at is old damage, that like stained wall. And I, I, I'm just speaking from my personal opinion. I think what he saw was old damage. What, you know, stained wallpaper upstairs, you know, like he mentioned about the floors being kind of spongy. I mean, I think had Elton or myself or John or anybody had the opportunity to do that walkthrough, I don't think we'd be sitting here today having this discussion, so.
So where, where do you go from here with it?
So I, I've been president for a little over three years now and I have tried. And, and when Butch was here, I was working with Butch. We were trying to get grant money for the K House. And then, and I've had lengthy discussions with Adam about, you know, where to go with the K House, grants. Unfortunately, there's that little clinch because it's town-owned property. The town has to apply for the grant, not the society. Or it has to be the town has to have, you know, an expense fund. Because when the question is always going to come up, well, why isn't the town taking care of the building? So there's, you know, and, and then you say, well, we have this agreement with the town that we would maintain it. Well, the town still has to apply for the grant. So we just have not been able to find an opportunity available to us to get money to fix the K House.
So what, what are they telling you you've got to do to get it back where you were?
So essentially, we all know the porch is a huge issue. Two years ago, I did get a quote from Elm Hill Carpentry and a basic fix, like, you know, not historical, which that wouldn't, not what we were proposing, would be around $4,500. And that would essentially be, they would just fix the porch. To have it historically correct, it's around, you could probably essentially say it'd be double that because of, you know, the type of porch it is. So that's, that's huge. That's a major fix. We have an issue with the ceiling in the bathroom upstairs that, um, the ceiling, because back in the days when it got wet, the, it's that plaster. So it just keeps falling down because it, it was essentially wet. So when it dries, it's just becomes like, yeah. So there's that issue. As far as the flooring, we've had some conversation about, you know, what would it take? And again, we may have to put a beam in the middle of the kitchen floor that goes to the ceiling to prevent that, you know. But again, it's been that way for four years. So there are lots of things. There's lots of things, I mean, that we've been working on as far as, as Elton said, the place has been vinyl sided. The place has brand-new windows, found stairs. You know, the old windows are what we're having an issue with because they have to be recocked because they're just popping out, you know. So there's, there's a lot, but I think there's, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to get grants. As you know, and what you've been hearing in the newspapers, our ability to raise money to save the one-room schoolhouse. And it's huge. I mean, we've, we've raised over $31,000 just for the schoolhouse. So again, we weren't necessarily, you know, again, we were kind of between a rock and a hot spot trying to get money for the K House because we couldn't do it. We couldn't get grants. So I think, I think, you know, in a year or so, I think we could make some huge improvements on the K House. But again, we can't now do anything until next year because it's got to go to a town vote in November.
So if.
I'd make the motion that we let them get affordable for the season and see how it works.
Wait a second. All those in favor? Could you say?
You'll find the money, won't you?
Absolutely. We'll make her work.
Thank you.
Yes to the portable toilet, I heard somebody asking.
Yes to the portable toilet. Thank you.
5.5, reappointment of Patricia Lera Bay to the Hills Board and Historic Preservation Committee.
Wow, you guys get to all witness that. Historic preservation and we'll save the meeting.
Thank you. 5.6, abatement request for the tax year 2022 in the amount of $222 for Hamlin Pa. Jordan LL State located at Lars Drive, map, R 13 lot 16 out.
This is recommended approval by Donna Hayes, the assessing agent. It was an error in acreage resulting in a $222 value.
Make a motion to withdraw the abatement.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. 5.7, Pismo Beach Park table replacements. Adam.
Recently, I was down at Pismo Beach doing a walkthrough with the rec director, looking at some other items. We noticed that the, there's the picnic tables that are underneath for those little, those little coverings, you know, the, I can't think of what they're called, but the covered picnic tables. There's four of them. The picnic tables that are there are quite old. They're made of wood. Definitely needs some maintenance. Rather than going down the road of trying to fix them, I asked the rec director to find some replacement tables. I did ask her to look for some preferably metal ones like you would see in maybe a regular park or something like that. She did find some. They're $1,165 a piece. That's expensive for a picnic table. However, they are maintenance-free, last a really long time. Metal picnic table, they'll be able to be in the weather. So replace all four, that'd be $4,660. So talking to the, you know, asking the board if the board would consider that, coming from the 9714 reserve account, which is the recreation subdivision facility accounts.
Second.
Discussion?
Are these going to be anchored somehow?
Yeah, there's already, there's an anchor in the concrete so we can put a chain around it. Or these actually, you can bolt them to the, so one, one or the other will hang. You just see it going across the lake?
Does this say warranty on these things? I mean, you can buy a lot of wooden picnic tables for $1,100.
I believe there was a warranty. I should have that to my tongue, but I believe there was a warranty when I read through these.
I don't know if this is a one here, remember, but I did read someplace on something as a three-year warranty. Was this it?
I should have had that to my tongue, sorry guys.
Manufacturer.
I can check on the warranty if the board would like before we move forward, but I don't think I have that in here, so.
No, we can keep running.
Are you ready, Earl? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
5.8, town sewer discussion continued.
All right, so this is a continuation of the sewer discussion. I have Zenia here with us tonight. So we did a little bit of research, I should say Zenia did a little bit of research. We talked about how many, you know, laterals that we have and how many of those laterals would service, you know, unoccupied lots or one lateral would service more than, you know, one account or a user. And what we found is that, how can I, that is a good way to put it. What we found is that, yes, there are some, but there's so many hypotheticals, it's charged, it's hard to really make a guess. Like as an example, there's a development on 26th up towards the casino that's being done, what used to be that sliding hill. And, you know, that, that is going to be one lateral that's going to service what?
I think it's, total, he planned, I believe, like 18 or 20 houses.
Right.
Like slowly.
So. And then there's other places on 26th where that's just a vacant field and there's one lateral. So what, what Zenia and I talked about was, as far as this program to try and get people hooked up, it's not that we're trying to set expectations low, but I think we'd have more realistic expectations if we stayed on the number of laterals that we have, which I think was, what did we say, 273? Yep. And stuck with that is our, is our, kind of our benchmark. And we had discussed, you know, in July, putting that forward to try and get people, you know, able to hook up. I did work on a sewer connection, you know, application. It's very similar to the loan application. Of course, this would be like a grant program like we talked about that landowners could do. I really want to focus on keeping it as simple as possible. Contractors, the applicant would submit a quote from the contractor that was itemized. Zenio, we've had a discussion on the CPO qualified to look at the proposals and I believe he is. So I did bring some of the, you know, sample of that for the board. There's four of them. So I'm not sure exactly how the, you know, the board would like to proceed, if the board would like me to make sure this is ready to kick off July 1st, if the, or how, how the board would like to proceed.
Now, are we going to let them use anybody they want for contract?
What I'd like to see is I'd like them to find their own contractors.
Yep.
But.
We give them some rules, rules to go by?
Yes.
Makes sense to that.
So that way, if they go and they find Contractor X and Contractor X, say he's local, he can submit to the town his tax information and all of those items and we could even start, we call a preferred contractor list. he can submit to the town his, uh, tax information and all of those items, and we could even start, we call a preferred contractor list, you know, so that these people have done this work. And that way, if somebody wants to go on our website, they could look them up and he's some people we could use. We've got their stuff on file. It'd just be easy peasy. But I feel like I'm cautious on putting a cap on how much specifically we're going, you know, we would pay because it's going to be different circumstances from talking to Zenia. Some might cost significantly less than others. So, um, I think it would be in the best judgment to take it on a case-by-case basis.
Including that we're supposed to, um, pay for the pump stations.
Yes.
Too. So that, that's already like three thousand dollars just there. And then earthwork, and then materials. So like, it will be cheaper to do gravity than to do, uh, pumping system, like force main, but like, there's places which have to go, uh, with the pump station.
And I think that, um, sending out, I think we talked about a letter, like right off the bat, you know, say July one, if you will, sending out a letter that says this is available, that it's going to be available till June thirtieth, and then the following July one, that folks, if they're not enrolled in, or at least in the process of this program, or hooked up, then they need to expect that the standby fees would, you know, become effective thereafter.
You say till June thirtieth. Is it June thirtieth or until the, the funding runs out for it? Because there's only so much funding set aside.
I think that's a very good point. Um, we could say June thirtieth or the funding, you know, whichever expires first. And I think the funding that we're all talking about is the, um, the, the...
The initial one that we talked about originally?
Yep.
Which was a total of?
I think it's two-thirty left.
Two-hundred and...
Two, two-twenty-four sixty-eight.
I mean, I'd be happy to exhaust that. You could look at getting some more if we had to.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to, I don't think we want to put it out there that it's going to go till June thirtieth and if we run out of money halfway through the year.
No, I think that needs to be added to our... Other thoughts, questions?
So who's going to approve these? I'm going to leave that to you to approve, or are you going to bring each one to the board?
So my request would be that, uh, you allow the manager and the sewer department superintendent and the finance director to have the ability to approve these collectively.
I support that.
If you could just let us know as we go, as you make progress to the foot, I would support that as well.
I think that, uh, yeah, as these get approved, that you folks should get a report monthly or what have you of what, if anything, we're, you know, getting.
I would agree with that.
I can live with it.
Alright.
Do you want a motion for that?
That would be great, especially if, uh, authorizing the manager to...
Make the motion.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Let's go. Chair, some second.
Right, so that's done.
Thank you.
Item number six, department head report, transfer station Edward Knightley, fees, hours, and capital discussion.
So Ed wanted to, uh, come and grace us with his presence tonight. So he wanted to, he mentioned to me the other day, some concerns about hauling fees, Ed. Ed, and, uh, did you want to hit on the hauling fees and then maybe talk about the roll-off?
Yep. I think as a, a last vote and all that as far as money-wise, he's gone up on his price again. So he's now at, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars per haul for a fifty-yard containers. And he's at four-hundred-and-forty dollars a haul for a hundred-yard container.
He said four-forty.
Four-forty. And then if, then if he turns around and we don't, we want our trailer back in our yard, it's another hundred dollars, what they call a pegging fee, bob tailing fee. So he charges us a hundred bucks for that if we want that spare trailer back in our door yard. Which lately, they've been just hauling it down and leaving it down there and when he comes back, he brings it back. But discount is growing and we, we can't live on one trailer a week now.
So that's to bring it back right off?
Right. To have it sitting in the yard, which I, we talked about maybe getting a, just a little tractor that we can move trailers in and out. The reason for that would be, we could fill the trailer completely full and then we could swap the trailer out. Right now, the trailer's going down to three-quarters full on a Friday because we can't make the weekend. Uh, and then usually Tuesdays, hauling it again. So Tuesdays and Fridays, he's been hauling the trash real and it's, you know, it's either full or three-quarters. So me figuring prices, if we was to do the two-forty-five, uh, for fifty yards, we do three, about three times a week, that's thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars of paying. If we do the four-forty for two times a week on the hundred yard, that's forty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty. The total we're paying this almighty waste is eighty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars a year. That's just our basics.
Not like Christmas and...
You know, that's the thing. And, and I called him up and told him, you know, the, the fees are going up and his service is going down. These, these, um, fifty yards, we have to call four or five days ahead before we can even get somebody to come and haul it. You know, and they might come on a Saturday morning. And he literally just told me a few, well, he wasn't happy with the service to find somebody else. He hung the phone up my ear.
And who was that?
This is almighty waste. I think he's just, he's grown so much that he's gotten all these, got Otis Field, he's got Oxford, and plus all his other ones, and he just can't keep up.
You talk to anybody else?
No, I haven't. That's why I was wondering if the board maybe put out the bid and see if somebody else comes along, you know? But we don't want to burn our bridges here, but I'm just saying, if, I figure that's eighty-three thousand dollars we're paying him just for our basic hauling the trash.
And if, if our containers are only three-quarters full, we're actually losing money.
We are.
Paying more than we should be paying because those containers should be full.
And we can't, we can't do it because on a Friday, you've got to have it emptied and you're only going to make the weekend and you're going to crash in the bin and we'll have another fire and then I don't want to see that.
So the, the pickup days, is that based on his schedule or when we need it?
When we need it. We wa, we watch the gauge.
And is it, um, the days the dump is open have something to do with that?
The, some days, i- if we're full on a, on a Sunday, after we close, he'll come Monday. But I have to go in and run the tractor to clean up the mess from, you know, that falls out of the back of the trailer and close the door. So that puts me in another hour and I'm a day off. I mean, it's just a thought, we, I, I don't know if we want, try to put it out to bid and see if we can get somebody else, local, that's got a tractor trailer, that's got a, you know, wet system on it, if you can dump that trailer, because you're going to have to have a wet, wet system.
That was kind of my thought is, uh, Ed, Ed brought this up, you know, Ed had brought this up, is that maybe the RFP would be the way to go. And see what we get for other offers.
Are there companies that do that? What kind of annual contract?
I would think they would be.
So we want...
And if they...
Is that contract with him yearly or is it?
We have no contract with him. He just changes prices right in the middle of, right in the middle of the season.
That's why he can increase whenever he wants.
He won't give you a contract either.
There are companies that will do that and they will do, um, three and five-year contracts. Whether or not they would come to Oxford because of the distance is another thing. And, um, the fee may be considerably higher because of the distance. I mean, I'm aware of some companies that do it, but it's not this and...
Well, I, I talked to ABC and he said he would come in for this price.
Yeah.
But there's one in Poland that's two-oh-seven waste now that just come in business, right down across the Poland highway garage. And he was interested in, you know, maybe doing that, the roll-off, but he didn't end up into the, to the trash trailer.
Right.
And right now, I'm sending all my demo to Main Waste, which is eighty-six dollars a ton, which runs out July first. But Almighty was charged us a hundred-and-thirty dollars a ton plus ten dollars per mattress. That all of a sudden just come around when we started charging our fees.
A ton plus?
Yeah. And the, and the thing about it, it goes into the waste. The mattress is already in there, and then he charges ten dollars per mattress, every mattress in the load.
I would think June and RFP would be a first step.
I don't think you get anything to lose, right?
No, we don't.
I'm saying, I mean, but if you start looking at eighty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars, we could buy a truck and have it, somebody haul it for ourselves.
Don't get too crazy, bud.
No, I'm just saying though.
Don't get too crazy.
Two, two years, you could have a truck paid for, couldn't you?
Yeah, you haven't bought one, I think.
Oh, no, a used one. You must have...
Well, you can buy a used one, I suppose, yes.
Yeah. Something that just, it's only going to go to the ultimate back.
No trouble is, Ed. Then you got to find somebody that's got license to do it, and I don't know if you caught on that. Just put two people looking for those people right now. So, I mean, I don't, maybe take small step.
I lost my driver, so.
Boy, it, it's, it's, it's a never-ending battle. And that's probably some of the reason for his costs, but I don't, I don't doubt that.
It's not going to hurt to go up for an RFP today. I mean, we don't have a contract.
Right.
And he's going to continue to service us, even if he does see that work.
Right.
We have an RFP out there. But again, he'll have to bid.
Right. Okay. So that's that.
And the other piece that Ed and I talked about is, um, back three months ago, uh, Ed had put in a capital request for a fifty-yard roll-off.
Yes.
And I've included that in here. It was, uh, ten-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, um, as his capital request. And as I mentioned to the board, I was going to start bringing some of these individual requests to the board for discussion and potential approval. And since Ed's here tonight, I just thought I'd bring that back, back to the board. Can you explain why you, why we need a new one?
The, the first one we got, that was back with warranties, the back doors all rotting off in it. But the picking up and all that, we can't get the service, so we need that extra dumpster to keep it up off the ground.
It's more cost efficient to have the hundred-yard trailer, right?
That's the, but that's the compactor. You have to push it in. Fifty yarder we loaded with a bucket load on.
Yeah.
Which, they're going out, they're going out with some heavy weight on them. But it's just that, like I said, it's the hauling, the problem with him getting him, you call him on a Wednesday, you might see him Saturday, you might see him the next week. We need that extra dumpster to be able to, to fall back to.
If the hundred yarder is the trash.
Right.
And the fifty yarder is the debris.
Right, yes.
And what you want is the fifty yarder.
Yeah, I just need to replace another one.
I'll make a motion that we replace the roll-up.
Second.
Discussion.
You get, there's two quotes here, correct?
Yep.
What kind is the one you got?
Uh, waste, waste equipment.
Okay. And how is that one, what is actually wrong with this one?
It's just rotten on the back, all the chemicals and stuff that goes in it and crap that goes in it, just, it's rotted the back door off. Which, I mean, it's fixable, but like I said, we need another, another container just so that we can have a backup in case he doesn't show up to empty it.
Well, so in other words, we're going to fix the door anyway, right?
Yep, we're going to, we'll have three.
And you were recommending Ed, the, the one for the ten-seven, right, the waste?
Yep, yep. I'm not sure if they'll have to back up the bid again or not, because this, and the quotes from last year, right?
Oh, yeah. I bet it will.
That's what I'm saying, it might have gone up and tried still a little bit.
Maybe get a current one and then we vote on it? No?
That's up to you.
Well, that'd be my motion.
If this isn't current, I think, if this is a year old...
What's, what's the date on it?
Says it expires on the fourteenth of January.
Yeah.
We'll have to get another one, but...
You, you need to get another quote.
I just don't, we aren't going to buy one. I just don't want to keep going to these people in Heston for a quote and then we don't buy nothing, you know? I've done that with the tractors. Oh, God. Now they got, they won't even bid on it now. They said they wouldn't even come back to bid.
So once you get an updated quote.
Okay.
That's really what we need.
Right.
I mean, if it doubles, then, you know, that's, that's another thing.
Right.
Then you have to look elsewhere. But yes, I would, I would ask this company, since they wrote below bidder.
Yep.
What their price would be today and ask if they...
I'll just, I'll just call them.
So you've actually got two of them right now?
We do.
You think you need a third of them?
We do. They're, they're, they're full and then we wait, wait, wait. That's what I'm saying, we have to wait for this company to come and empty it.
But I mean, he won't come and, I mean, you call him up and you tell him we got this fifty yard...
You might see him three or four or five days...
And you get the other one full before he comes and gives it?
Yep.
Maybe this time to update him.
Yeah. But that's what he said to me and he hung up the phone. But he said, if you ain't happy with my service, find somebody else. He hung the phone up my ear. I told him I was coming to the flat man tonight. He, well, not happy with my service and find somebody else, quick.
Sound like one.
So that's where we're at, you know?
So I would get an updated price, ask this company if they'll honor that price.
Okay, yeah.
And then if they honor that price, that's all that.
Can we do, can we put that through if they own in that price that we can go ahead and, well, bring it back?
I'd be okay with that.
Me, yeah. I mean, had motion second. I'd say, you're looking at eleven-seven-seven-three is the total?
It was a ten, ten-seven.
Yes.
Ten-seven was a sub total of a silver grand to ship it.
Seven-three.
Mine's still, yes.
Up to twelve thousand dollars if they'll honor that quote.
Then, okay, then I would be okay.
If not, you have to bring it back.
Okay, I can do that.
All those in favor of the update? Okay. Thank you.
And then as far as the insurance guy, when he come to the transfer station, he had a couple of problems. They recycle the building, the braces that come down off the lean two where they drive under, a Wappee, they've been that way. Brian said they've been that way for years, but he wants them replaced. And the wall, on the building down back, it's like them precast walls. Well, it's been this way for years. Somebody rented the back of it and cracked the back of it, but he wants that replaced. And I don't know how you replace it because the floor is poured over the top of the, the thing, so I don't know if you have to put a form or something else, sign is pour. Yeah, but that's what he's saying he needs fixed. He found a lot of things. Replace it when he found something.
Well, we can look at that and put that in the other.
Right.
And then, uh, the other thing that we were going to bring up as well is, uh, transfer station hours was the last thing. Uh, I had some discussion about, uh, the hours over there. Um, I put in the board's packet to some, just a quick proposal of making it so it's a five-day work week for the folks down there and they get two consecutive days off. Right now, they have Monday and Thursday off. Uh, I'd put in here the potential of having them closed on Sunday. And, uh, Sunday and Monday, but some feedback I got from board members was that maybe the more appropriate way to do it would be closed on Mon, you know, Monday, or excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday, or, you know, some variation because Sundays are quite busy.
So I'd like to hear from Ed on what the two slowest days are, in your opinion.
Wednesday is one of our slower days, and then we're off Thursday, so. I, I brought it to Adam too, that maybe when we hire the new people, because Bird is retiring as of, I'm, I'm, I'm saying November, but he's saying that something different now, but, um, and then Brian's being out. If, maybe when we hire these new people, if we give them like one weekend off a month, it would, it's going to make them want to work more. I don't know how we can feed it for hours, but, you know, offer them a weekend off, you know, every weekend is a killer. They're there every Saturday and from nine hours and Sunday for four, and that four hours on Sunday is just like nine hours on, on a Saturday. I mean, it's just...
So I, I would not be in favor of the transfer station being opened, uh, being closed on the Sunday morning.
We do not. I know that. That's a killer.
We have to accommodate too many people. And so Saturday and Sunday hours, I wouldn't recommend changing. I think, I think that the Wednesday and Thursday would make sense. And I do think, and they would still get Sunday afternoon off and you could maintain it still forty hours a week. I do think in hiring for that position, it's a lot harder to find someone to work at a job that they don't have two days in a row off. That's one of the hardest things in finding somebody to work at a transfer station. Uh, and it's not just here, it's other towns as well. And I think that now with the situation we're in, with staffing and all of the issues going on, that it makes more sense to change the hours now, so that when we hire someone new, we're telling them a schedule that will give them two consecutive days off. And they will be more, um, accepting of a job with two days in a row. So that's what I, that's my recommendation. Other comments?
I would agree. I would not support closing on Sunday.
You'd never, you'd never could do it. I, I'd love to see it, but you don't could do it.
No, right.
I mean, the, the line is at the gate when we go in at eight o'clock. I mean, if anything, we'd really need to start at seven on Sundays. Because I mean, you just, you can't get out of there in no time. You have a line around the building at twelve o'clock and you're, you're there till quarter after, twelve-thirty.
So being closed Wednesday and Thursday means being open on Monday?
Right.
I don't know how Monday will be. I mean, but it, it'll be busy, Ed, what if I go open? I don't know how Monday will be. I mean, but it'll be busy. It, it won't be for a while because they're going to have to be used to it, but.
Well, I tend to think, in my opinion, that Monday will be busy. And the reason for that is you have all of the weekend trash, especially going into the summer season with all of the camp people here. And, you know, they generate a lot of trash.
You wouldn't believe the amount of people that still call us on Wednesday and want if we're open from the holiday on Monday, you know, the.
But it's like anything else, you're not going to know unless you try it.
That's, that's going to save, I will save the towns the money too because we get paid for the holiday and we'd be closed. So that would be just a holiday.
Are holidays.
Right.
And that might even, with those hours, that's why I asked you earlier, if the hours made a difference on getting your, your, your loads full instead of.
On, on the, on the hundred yarder, I have no problem with the guy. I call him on the phone, he's there.
Yeah.
But then, then fifty yarders, it's just you have to go through the office. I have the direct line to the guy for the hundred yarder. And I say, hey, I'm full. And he can usually be there until four hours. But he ain't going to come on the weekend. He works Monday through Friday, so.
So do you want to make a motion to change the hours? What do you want to do? Are you, you're good with that?
I'm good with it, with the new people coming on, but I'm, I'm not sure about our old people. They want to change. I gotta bring it back to them, maybe?
Well, you.
I mean, we're still having Bert.
But now it's you and this isn't going to happen this week.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying. I mean, give us.
You've got to have a notice.
Yeah, I was thinking probably maybe a couple of months we might want to advertise that, but.
It'll be released into July.
Yeah, okay. Just, as of right now, I guess Adam's talked to Bert since then, but I'm going to wait. But he's planning on retiring. He was planning on in November. But then his housing problems, something happened and they told me he had to be down by July first.
And that's, that's a conversation you can have with Bert and the manager.
But.
I would, I mean, if you want a motion, I'd make a motion that we change the hours to be open, how would it be? Friday through Tuesday, closed Wednesday and Thursday.
Do the four hour day?
Saturday the same four hour day.
Sunday being the four hour day.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
So, so it's Tuesday is less than you would have, I mean, a Thursday is, is a better, slower day than a Tuesday would be?
Thursday, we were always closed anyway.
Oh, I guess it would have been slower than that would have been. Let's go with it.
Okay. All those in favor? Close. Thank you.
That's all we had.
Thank you, Ed. Yes, yep.
When would you start this?
It will be, the manager will notify us and once everything is in place, it's not going to be effective right now.
It'll be August morning?
Yeah.
I know. It'll probably make the newspapers.
August first?
August first?
I'm not going to do it till somebody says it on the record.
I think August first makes great sense, yeah.
And then I'm sure there are questions and comments. That's all. Item number seven, town manager report.
All right. Just wanted to give the board a few updates. Rabbit Valley Road has been a topic of conversation. I have followed up with pine tree engineering and with the board's conversation the last time we were here. So he has it on the schedule to start looking at putting together a cost estimate for Rabbit Valley Road, and that's Route twenty-six up the hill where the drainage issues were. I referenced what was done on Allen Hill. So that's kind of the, the approach that he's going to be taking on that. I did tell him that this would be a project for the next fiscal year, you know, just for the flow of money. So that's kind of what he's got in mind. Over on the road down to Pismo Beach, there, there's a retaining wall there. We've talked about that some as well. He is currently working on putting together some estimates on that as well that I'll be bringing to the board in the near future. Just wanted you to know that that was not forgotten about. The status of the paving for Whittamore Road, Number Six Road and Potter Road. Whittamore and Number Six, they are both have their base, they have their base paving done now. He is planning to come back for the, the, what we call the finish coat or top coat, whatever, within the next five to six weeks. He'll be back to finish that up. And then also, the, the roof here on this building is one of the things that was mentioned in the inspection when we purchased the building. Noticed a couple of shingles have, you know, been a little bit loose and so forth. I'm going to be putting that together as a, we still have some funds in the building account for this building. I was going to be probably trying to put together an RFP for roofing to see what kind of prices are out there, you know, before too much time goes by. So I can bring that in front of the board if you'd like to see the RFP or, you know, before it goes out or what have you. And then also, see a lot of paper in front of you. I was thinking about if the board would be interested in trying to do something with like laptops or something like that for the, for your packets and so forth. Is that something that the board might be interested in? I've been talking to the IT guy and.
I would be.
Not me.
Everybody's got a different comfort level with computers.
I don't want to sit here at a meeting and look at a computer.
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm bringing it up, yeah. So if I were to find a way to come up with maybe one or two, and maybe folks could try them out and if they work good and then others, if they wanted to move forward with something in the future, then, I mean, I'm thinking about like some, you know, something refurbished, you know, but with a decent sized screen that you'd be able to do your emails, your, your packets, you know, that you'd be able to log into the portal and that kind of stuff. So I'm thinking. All right. And then lastly, Wendy has a quick update for you as well.
All right. So we recently hired a new deputy clerk and her name is Kathleen Dillingham and she's working wonderfully. And she's been great support for me. Just welcome her away. If you see her out front.
Adam, did they say when they were going to do the color extension on Whittamore?
Color extension? God, let me follow up. That was a conversation.
The other, the other thing is, right up here, at the end of Whittamore where you would turn there to, like if you was going to the Rod and Gun Club, that big hole in that road, been there for about a month now. And I've had a couple of people mention that to me.
Oh, you know, on the Payne Road?
Yeah. I was having a draw in a little blank. It's too close to home, you know where I'm at. There's, that hole has been there for a long time now. I'm not exaggerating.
I didn't know if we were waiting for the female meeting for that refill then, but yeah.
Any, down here on Whittamore, are they going to come back and, and bring that dirt up to the top? Because if you want to ride down through there right now, there's a lot of places where the erosion has already started, where the pile of dirt was left on the side, washing it right down the deck.
They're supposed to be doing shoulder finish work when they, when they finish the top coat and everything, so.
And maybe it's going to be five to six weeks where you expect that the tuck will be on you and you could do some.
You ride up it and you'll see what I mean. You know, I, you haven't got to look at it real high, you'll be able to see it. And did he, did he give up on the idea of the trees and the rock?
The rock is going to go away and that should be going away shortly. And I, Jim and I will fill him in on the trees.
Oh, okay. Well, nothing to me. It was, it was an offer, so.
Yeah.
I think they should put more barriers around that hole, whether they're just those little cones.
You mean up, up where the hole in the road is?
Yeah.
Well, I think we ought to just fix it myself.
I mean, can you have Jim with the.
You can jump in there and go on the side.
Oh, I think you could put most anything in it, go on the side.
Yeah. It keeps getting bigger, it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'll go that way.
Well, no idea. I'm really, and I guess I don't either, but.
Don't.
Some of the people who live up there think that could be a problem.
Yeah.
Lose a cow in a hole.
Is that it?
That's all I have now, please.
So I can, I can use number eight.
The hole in the road is a black problem, I guess, this week.
And mine was the extension of the color extension.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's holes that need to be patched. They put gravel in that, on the East Oxford Road, in front of Kennison's old house. It's already washing out again, so. Is there a reason they're not patching that with pavement?
I can certainly ask.
I mean, they put gravel on it at least three times now, so.
I'll ask them in the box. So they're, yeah, I might know if there's a reason.
I just did another one. Sam Row at East Oxford, Hebrew Road intersection by Henry's House.
Oh.
Come on up Sam Row Hill looking down East Oxford. There's a tree right there. And I know this because yesterday, you can't see down the road, so maybe they could cut that tree back.
Okay. That's on East Oxford, you're coming.
Not saying crossing East Oxford to go on East Oxford or.
There, there is a tree, but he's right. It's like you can't see till you're, that's not intersection, you want to be sticking. Mostly downhill way.
Yeah.
So I just have a couple of things. The, in talking about the picnic tables at Pismo, last year when we did an assessment of the complex down there, the steps to the beach, if they haven't, and I didn't go down to check before tonight, but they needed to be replaced because they're broken and the railings. So can you have the steps and the railings looked at to make sure that they are in a safe condition?
When I did that walkthrough, the steps need to be replaced. I brought that up from our conversation last year. And, and that is one of the things that I've given her for instruction is to get the quotes for those steps, because those need to be done. I, I told her that aluminum steps probably would be the best thing to look at.
Can you get an update from the rec director on the program? She's up and running for, it should be up and running by the time we have our next meeting.
Yep. I'd actually asked her to come to the next selectance meeting for the department head report to get an update on that.
And the only, only other thing with the Pismo complex is the concession stand smoke detector.
Yep.
That still has not been hooked up as of this week.
Yep. She has, after we had a conversation about that, that's been, should have been addressed yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Number nine, signed warrants, one oh one, one oh two, three, four, and one oh five.
I should probably, could you grab those for me? Because I left them right on the thing. They're right outside of my door. Where's Sharon? What's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
Remember me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all you yesterday.
That's all you yesterday? Oh, you did?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I'll be contacted, I'll be contacted maybe, yeah.
Okay.
See if we can help with the next phase.
Roger, say, John.
Thank you, everybody.
How are you?
I'm bad. And yourself, sir?
Excellent, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Great lady. I have a question. We had a talk before about the four each by this year. So I'm, I'm making some room there. I've got the.
You're waiting on the warrants, yeah?
Good to be back. Good to see you all again. Can I ask you a question?
No, I, I mean, we're looking so.
No, I mean, if you get them, it would be, yeah.
That's a basic one.
Yeah, the progress development.
We can work something out. We'll make it work.
Yeah, they don't have a choice. Have a great night. Just make, make sure you take her with you though. She can't be left unsupervised.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry, guys.
Damn dogs. Fool us. We're working that. She's feeding time for different. I get fed once in the morning, once at night.
Yep.
And they managed to swim to us a couple of times already. I got a black lab that can do eight, eight times a day.
It would have to probably be state, state change law, but we're all.
When you're on board, let me know.
Yeah.
No, I can meet with you in the.
No. Researching. Bring out exactly.
Do you want to?
Okay.
Yeah.
We'd like to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great to see you all.
Sir.
Good to see you.
How are you?
Good.
Excellent.
Good times.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Only Metro Chamber offers awards and.
I have a question.
Doc, you're just talking to some.
This is way more better. Way more better.
This is fun. And it's inside.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, it's good. You should always, yeah, you're always going to come. But it's definitely more fun.
It's your talk.
That's right. It was productive though, so it's good.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Very good.
Have a great day.
Thank you. It is.
No, it is a little.
I think it's just you.
That's nice, Wendy.
Not to scuff.
I think it's all.
Blending.
Good enough.
Let me know when I start.
Adam said USA first.
Two on that one, I think.
The camera's on.
I almost did it too.
I shouldn't have said anything, should I?
Almost right.
Yeah.
He's been two hours ago, right? How long?
And everything is, is wet.
I did notice that.
Not even enough time to dry out.
Sun never comes up, it's a little billow fast enough.
I can't, I'm going to have to hang mine now because the lawnmower broke down and I haven't time to fix it.
That sounds like a country song.
Or good.
Because you talked about your dog, the lawnmower breaking.
Not going to talk about my wife.
No, that's dangerous. Though I apparently stole her coffee cup accidentally earlier, so.
Is that your wife's name?
Yeah.
You stole your wife's coffee cup?
Yeah, I stole it this morning, apparently.
Probably not. Well, well, she was looking for that this morning.
Probably not.
Big one for sign one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five.
Second?
All those in favor? Thank you. Item ten, executive session to enter executive session to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to MRSA Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four oh Five, Six. to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, 6A.
So, second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Senior in executive.
Don't get the times where you went.
Okay, thank you.